We start by having the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Start in their text, the approval minutes of the May 19, 2015 meeting. They have a motion.
I'm here.
Carol made the motion, her second.
I'll say.
Mr. Curry made the second. And then all yes?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to sign in, or do we have a late signer in?
We have a late signer in.
Well, even though it's against rules, I'm gonna let it speak anyway. We'll be a little bit liberal this evening.
I thank you. Hey, how are you guys? You're up, Mr. Martin. I've been meaning to come to a school board meeting for over 203 days now, so if I finally get to one, I had another meeting in town, so I wanted to stop by and let you know, I'm a delegate for most of the county and I want to do what I can to support you. I've met a number of you guys on Capitol on a number of occasions, so... But the main thing is, I remember trying to meet with a lot of the principals and a lot of schoolteachers before the end of this year, before the session starts next year, to try to understand some more of the education issues. I was kind of one of a few people that were pushing back against the Common Core and the teach for the test, teach for the test issues that all teachers complained about. And I saw other teachers with the Common Core and changing the standards. I know we spent a lot of money on it, but I think we couldn't do better as a state than some of the other states or cities. There are some major problems, computer tie-ups and shutting down computer labs for months and months. So, if I can be of help at all, please let me know. I'm not on the Education Committee, but I do have a five-year-old, a seven-year-old, and pretty passionate about education. Thank you.
Glad to have you come speak with us. Welcome anytime. Present, that's the only person that's signed in as of yet. Okay, so presentations, we have Shelley Gaines, and Shelley's gonna talk about the high school and childhood class facility thing with her assistant, Mr. Christian.
I was gonna introduce or say a few words.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to, before Shelley speaks, did you bring your...
Yeah, you talk, I'll talk.
Well, of course, you all know the early childhood education is a pilot program this year, and when you're gonna have a pilot program, who better to have to lead that than one of the original visionaries of it, which was Shelley? And she's been instrumental in developing the curriculum and all the different aspects. And we just recently had a meeting with State Department and Southern to try to work out an agreement with them to have our students to, well, we could word articulation with them as far as our kids moving on to that degree at Southern. Again, just the need for some of the things she's gonna ask for, and I'll let her get into some of that, but as far as the early childhood, some of the skills that are required, new require bathroom and those types of training things that you have to have hands-on, and we just don't have that right there. And it would help carry over too with our, I guess we call it just baby day, where the kids bring their, the kids bringing the kids in, and you know, and they have to have a facility as well. And a lot of times, they're having to traipse through the building and school to find a restroom for their kids, and that's just, in my opinion, that's just not appropriate, really.
Mr. Christian, are you or Ms. Gaines want to explain to us exactly what this facility need is?
Yes, it is. She's ready to go. I just want to say that we're fortunate to have Ms. Gaines be a part of this, and while we do need it, she can give you more details and all that. Go ahead, Shelley.
So I'll just say a thing or two before I start this, you to the video. YouTube is not of my generation, okay? So Mike McCormick helped me and came in and shot this, and we probably did it four or five times. So having watched it since it was finished, there are things that have been left out, and I'll try to fill those in. This is just about three or four minutes, but I thought it would be better to let you see the classroom before we talked about changes. And I hope that this all works. I can pause it and then get big, I'm not sure how to do that. Is this like a big one? Okay. And volume?
She got a lot.
I have speakers in my room.
Slide. I guess it's a tiny thing because we started here. Can you hear that?
That we're not too... Very faint.
Is your man, I should have called him.
I apologize, I'm not the technology person. I'm all hands off. Okay.
Drink coffee. Your speaker, sir.
We didn't cut off. We tried the website, we're... Exactly. Thank you for your patience. I think this may be as loud as it gets, but I promise I can talk better and answer questions when it's finished.
Hello, welcome to the early childhood classroom at Lincoln Army High School. I thought I was gonna come in and ask it to make some changes to the classroom. It would be first smarter to show you the classroom, so let's come in and take a look.
Excuse my grammar.
As soon as you come in, you're gonna notice that we have children's cubbies back here in the corner. We used some grant money and got materials, and the carpentry class made this for us. This is primarily used by the infants and toddlers who come with their parents once a month to the teen parenting program. I mean, just in their own sense of space, and makes this more like a real daycare setting. Paper storage, lots of art supplies, books and videos, that kind of storage. And then over here, this is one of our, our new pride and joy. I wrote a grant to the Toyota Foundation, and we were able to purchase this changing station, some storage, lockable storage down here. But the best part is that we have a portable sink. So portable in that, you see, there's no plumbing, it's not connected to anything. I didn't have to, you know, make any major changes to the facility, and we are able to just pump in water, it heats the water, and then sends it through. So that's a great addition to the class. This side of the room, really this third of the room, is set up like a daycare center, so, or preschool. We've got constructive, manipulative play toys, puzzles, games, gross motor, a quiet corner, library, imaginative play, you name it, we've got it. And we do that because the best way to learn is hands-on. And so students in the early childhood program practice the lessons that they prepare here, and then when we have those infants and toddlers on the teen parenting program days each month, we have a space, a legitimate space, to play with them in. The rest of the classroom is a pretty traditional classroom. So whiteboard, computer, printer, we do have this amazing model pad, which gives us lots of different options. It's a computer, we can access the internet, we can do live conferencing, really, I can use this as a smart board too. So all of those capacities are within one device, and that's really helpful. And then, we have more storage here in the back. This is really the room that I'd like to draw your attention to, because this is where we'd like to make some changes. Right now, it serves as storage. Traditionally, it has been an office for the teacher in this classroom. We have lots of toys, manipulatives, additional books, we have the infant simulators, lots of extra things that we use for the teen parenting program days, where we have those tables here. And what we have written in a grant to the State Department is to convert this into closed storage and to add bathroom facilities for the teen parenting program, specifically for the children. So this wouldn't be facilities that adults can use. But we would take all of this stuff that you see now and put it in cabinets. Along this back wall, we would add, we put the changing station over here with a real sink that is hooked up with water. Water actually, plumbing is right on the other side of this wall. So it's very little effort to plum this room. We'd have two small children's toilets with a sink in between. We have storage about waist-high on this side of the wall, so that those infants and toddlers would have some privacy, but leave the glass up top so that as caregivers, we can see them and monitor them and make sure that they're safe in there. So that, that's what we're hoping to do, and I'll answer any questions that you guys might have. Hello, welcome to an early childhood classroom. We don't need it again.
I'm your face.
Yeah, get rid of that face on there. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. So the back, back room that is an office has been an office for everybody else who's ever used that classroom, and my understanding is lots of people have funneled through that classroom over the years. I don't use it as an office at all. I use it as storage and more workspace. So if they're, they're doing letters for the bulletin board, or if they're laminating a book that they made for a preschool class, or I mean, it's just more space that they use to work at. However, when we are teaching future teachers about the hygiene and safety requirements for working with young children, thus far, everything that we've been able to teach has been purely theoretical. So I can teach you to memorize the steps of changing a diaper, and I can teach you that to memorize, you know, all of the hygiene policies and things that need to be followed, but they're not put into practice in any way, because we, we just got the portable changing station and the sink. Let's see, it is May, mid-April. So prior to that, we had no water in the classroom, so even for hand washing, we didn't have anything for hand washing. And so what we had for the days, one day a month when we do the teen parenting program, we had this year four infants and four toddlers. And so every time, over the course of a regular school day, that an infant needed to have a diaper changed, we would have to go disrupt the program, bring mom back, mom would have to, you know, create whatever she felt like was a suitable service to change her baby. And then baby would come back to us, mom would have to go down the hallway, wash her hands, go back to the session. And if it was a toddler, and we had three potty training toddlers, we ended up using a little porta potty, because you can't wait, tell the 21-month-old that they have to walk, clear down the building, because the bathroom down here is locked at this time, before they can use the bathroom. So that meant we were walking through the school with the contents after they had used a portable potty in the classroom. So what we'd like to do is put in two child-sized toilets and a sink. And we have had some folks come out to give us some estimates on that, because we had to have something in writing before we put the proposal in, which is a modernization grant through the State Department, career and technical ed. Didn't need, didn't require any matching funds. We did put in the matching funds from the Toyota Foundation for the equipment that we've already purchased, but not seeking any financial support from the Board of Education to do this, just seeking approval to make a renovation and put in toddler-sized potties that, you know, should this program not exist, would probably not be very useful, so.
Do you know the status at this time of your grant?
What I have been told is that they typically don't make announcements about that grant until after the school year is finished, sometime over the summer is what, that's what Jerry said, the way that they typically work.
When you, when you turn in modernization grants, you rank, we rank them, and one through however many you have, as by need, and we rank, I rank, I rank it first.
Now, when you say we rank...
Well, I say I rank, I'll just, I'll just say I.
Yeah.
Are you saying like the high school or the CTE?
Or the CTE, whatever.
Now, is this something that would be available before school started next year?
Yeah, they let you know, they let you know before, you know, school being, wearing school till the 18th, I don't know, we'll know that.
Jerry says he has, he's applied many, many times, Jerry Queens, and he almost always has received some portion of the monies that he's asked for, not necessarily everything, but, and that he usually knows sometime towards the end of the year, is what he said, the way it's been in the past, so.
We've had several modernization grants over the last few years as administrator, we've had several.
Who would install it?
Yes. I think I should have brought those names. Let's see, if Dana was here, he could, he could tell me the name. Basically, I had Dana, Mr. Smith, come over and look at the space and give me suggestions. He met with Derek and I, and Mr. Snyder as well, and brought over blueprints, and had Greg in to look at plumbing and whatever, all these things. And, and then he, you know, said, well, you know, there, there are some people that we've worked with before, here are some different names. And so I contacted those, all of those people, and a couple of them actually followed through and gave us, you know, a bit, a written proposal, that included the things that we talked about. I'm sorry, I cannot remember their names.
The grant itself covers the installation.
Yes, yes, yes.
Now, I guess you all already looked at the, the need if you have to have any of this quote, which would be it's done, the requirements of that, you all already looked at that aspect of it.
There's a cap on those grants as well.
It was 20,000.
20,000 is...
We all know what the cost of this project is, so...
The request was for 16,000 and some odd dollars, and that was materials and labor and, you know, everything.
Was that in line with the quotes you've gotten?
Yes, mhm, yes. Yeah, basically, all I did was take off, once we, because I had written the proposal to the modernization folks before I knew 100% that we got the Toyota funding, and so what was in that includes, like, the storage that now we don't have to purchase because we have that, that diaper-changing station that will take up that one wall.
So the equipment that'd be necessary and the labor is all, you have added to the fund for?
All in the grant. Well, if they, if they approve it, we'll, we'll have the funds for it.
Same, you knew it had.
Yeah, yes.
One thing I'd like to ask is, did you all, I mean, I know you've already said the grant, the grant probably includes how you plan to lay it out and all.
Yes.
Did you give consideration to what you mentioned when you first stepped up, that what if this program doesn't last long-term? And I guess it's probably a question you should ask Dana or someone else, or the person, company that may do the work. Is there a way to do this in a way that would minimize what was necessary, if the space needed to be converted to something other than what you're using it for in the future?
Yeah, we have talked about that. I mean, if they wanted to make it, you know, close that wall off and put, like, tinted glass in there and make it a facility that the teacher could use, because there isn't one on that end of the hallway, that would be very easily done. But also, the way that they're planning on doing the plumbing is to go under the floor, so they're not doing anything at all to the structure of the wall, so, you know, if they needed, and, and right on the other side of the wall, I think I mentioned, there is water source, and there's a place right there where they can cut the water source off as well. So if they needed to simply remove toilets, it would mean, you know, patching the floor, basically, and that would be...
What about where that window is? Is that, is that altered in any way?
Nope, it's not altered at all. We are gonna, basically, from that, for me, that goes this way. So the changing table would be this long, the window would be right here, and underneath that window, extend, extending over to the changing table, we'd put in like an L unit of cabinets, so that the space that we have right now, where students work on projects, that space would still be available, that it would actually have some storage built in underneath of it, so the window wouldn't move.
I think the two is...
That's why it's minimal cost.
Like, we're talking about with the teen parenting program that we offer, once a month, that would be a huge asset for that. Again, have those kids all at school, I don't know how good an idea, you know, but it's a necessity right now. And some of the things that has to go on with the disposal of the diapers and that type of thing, with this in place, they can pretty well be self-contained right now.
For the number of students, I think I heard you say this year there were eight, four in the teen parenting program?
Yes. We had, well, we had more than eight students, but we had eight children consistently, yes, attending. And we had more, we had more children that their parents chose not to bring them, or they couldn't bring them.
So that's the number of students that we're looking...
That would be using it, that would be using it...
Once a month.
Once a month. And then in terms of the ECE students, next year, we have almost 30 enrolled in the early childhood program, and, and this is part of what I put in the grant, so I'm not just saying this to you all, but if we are, which we are, doing simulated workplace next year, you know, you wouldn't expect Jerry's kids to learn how to change brakes by simply reading and talking about it and memorizing the steps. I couldn't send somebody out into a childcare facility or a preschool to work without knowing that they actually know how to do these things. And there, and there are standards that are not Lincoln County standards, they're not West Virginia standards, these are OSHA standards. So wherever these students go to work in this field, they are going to have to know these standards and understand how they, how you implement these standards in a work setting, so.
I think when you, you know, you talked about this program will last, I, I think when you look at, at the job market for these types of positions and everything that's being required now, it's gonna continue to grow, because again, with the agreement we have, these kids, they're going, you have to be certified to work in these places, and Lincoln County has, we have one, is that right, Joe?
We have one.
And the need is there, when you look at CTE and the need for programs, it's there. And, and not just here in Lincoln County, but the need for childcare is there.
I didn't mean to say...
No, 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 it's all genuine, no, no.
In terms of engineering, sometimes if you think a little bit ahead, you can say thousands and thousands of dollars down the road, it needs to be.
Yeah.
It's a growing, even though it's piled this year, I mean, we had 30, it's just a growing program. It really is.
Anybody else have any questions on that, or you can ask Carol, or anybody? Sounds reasonable to me, anybody else? Good luck getting the money and starting.
I'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley, appreciate your work. Derek, if anything comes up during the process, you can make your...
Yes, sir, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll act forward with all this. We'll keep seeing you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, Mr. Cummings, transportation report.
Hey, good afternoon. Since the last time we talked, we've had two inspections, our state inspector, the first one being on May the 7th. On May the 7th, we had four buses that were inspected. Two were returned to service, meaning that they passed the inspection, and two, two didn't. Unfortunately, one of the buses that was returned to service the next day blew the engine in a two, so that took us down another bus. Then on May the 20th, we had our second inspection. He inspected five buses at that time. One of them was put back in service from the previous time, but we lost four other. Total numbers as of this afternoon, we have eight buses that are out of service. We have four that we deem so old and, and the cost of repairs is so high that we essentially are not going to repair them and put them up for auction at some point. Not really willing to, to do that yet, because one of the buses that, that we'd had, that had been wrecked before, we're going to end up taking the motor out of it to fix the one that was, that blew up, so we're kind of needing parts for right now. We're in a pretty sad state with our, with our buses the way they are right now. We've had to rent three buses from Heritage to make, and borrow a bus from Boone County to make sure that we can make all of our runs. So what I'd like to propose is that we lease buses. We met with Heritage a week or so ago, they can provide us with 11 buses for next year. And the paperwork that I gave you has the payment plan, I'll get to that in just a second, but what we would be able to do is purchase nine 78-passenger buses at a cost of $88,490 apiece, one 84-passenger bus, which is $105,000, and one 90-passenger, which is $107,347. If our bus replacement money stays the same as it was this year, well, that, it was about $230,000, but it was cut $184,000 from last year. But if that money stays the same, we would be able to make our payment for the lease for these 11 buses for the next five years, and on the sixth year, we would probably be able to, to buy three additional buses. That's if our money stays the same. They're projecting that they're going to increase their money as these years go by, but you can't always count on that. But if that happens, we're projecting that we would be able to buy maybe, maybe a bus or two every two or three years as this process goes by. Now, the lease is not really a lease, it's really a, a loan payment, if you will. So what we're going to do is to be able to front-load our buses, we'd be able to buy these buses now, which would reduce our mechanical cost, save us money on that end. Plus, the biggest thing for us is with this older fleet that we have, that it would allow us to put a safer bus on the road for, for our kids to ride in. We have another option to consider with this lease payment, which would help us with some other issues too. But if the 90-passenger bus at $107,000, if we, if we didn't buy it and we purchased another 78-passenger bus, we could get by if we added another route on Route 10 side. And this will help us in several ways. One way is that the bigger buses that go up some of these hollows is... Uh, one way is that the bigger buses that go up some of these hollows is, is more dangerous than a smaller bus in the places that it turns and the maneuverability. Uh, also, the ninety passenger bus, we seem to have a lot more mechanical problems with than we do with the smaller buses. Another big benefit in this, if, if we were able to add another route, uh, is that it helps us with at least four overcrowded buses on Route Ten. And if, we met, Ms. Lucas and I, uh, met with the bus drivers from different areas, and that was one of their concerns, was the overcrowding issue on Route Ten. Uh, so that would help us with that. Plus, it saves us eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars on the purchase of, of the difference between a ninety passenger and a seventy-eight passenger bus.
Slowing down, is that...
Slowing down.
All right. You're gonna have to slow down to let me catch up here. Okay, so what you're saying here, first of all, now, have you all, is this permissible legally? Y'all own this bus?
Yes, and there was another county that had done this last year. Uh, actually, Birdy, Ms. Lucas, and Jeff and myself sat down with Heritage, Bill Duncan, uh, and he explained the process and, and showed the payment plans, but this isn't permissible. It, it's not really a lease, it's a, a finance, yeah, kinda like an auto loan.
Well, I just...
So we own them at the end.
Right. But I just, the fact that we're paying, uh, you know, there's, there was some question at one time about obligating future years, I guess is what I was thinking, that they found that to be permissible.
And they will work through that Pendleton County this year as a lease. I don't know how many buses that they purchased, but they're the first county to step out there and do this, and there are several other counties besides Lincoln looking at that for next year.
Yeah, and that's a lot caused of the, the funding cuts that we had, puts us, puts us in a bind.
Do you think Heritage would be able to, assuming, you know, we did it, others did it, they'd be able to accommodate all of these buses?
I mean, yeah, because what, what they actually do, uh, and it comes on a timeline when you get them, but when we put the order in, they build those buses at the, the factory, and they build them specifically for the way that we want them. So if we put in these buses, they'll build them and send them back.
Now, we're just kind of, these located, but the economy would benefit apparently.
But do they do the mechanic work on them?
No, we would do that.
You lease a bus?
Well, we're really not leasing, it's really a finance option. So it will be our bus. Uh, we're just spreading the payment out over the, the five years, so that we can get several buses now, so that we can put, uh, a better fleet out there.
Would there not be a warranty?
Yeah, well, there's a warranty, just like if, if we purchased it, it's the same thing.
We would be able to get more buses upfront, Fred, rather than purchase, because the dollar amount that we got this year, we only purchased two new buses.
Yeah, two new buses.
And, and with this plan, we would be able to get eleven.
Eleven.
That would be about twenty percent of our fleet, or twenty-five percent of our fleet new long-term.
Yeah. Which, which has to help us with, with our mechanical costs to, uh, you know, if, if these eleven buses are gonna be under warranty for however long the warranty is, if something happens, it's cost of, we're not more than...
And the warranty is how long?
Uh, I'm not sure to tell you the truth.
Oh, six years?
No.
Now, so this two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, that would be...
That would be our payment for...
For the next, for six years, right?
Six years, or five years, the six...
What about the next six years?
On the sixth year, we can buy additional buses.
Well, but, I mean, I think, that's assuming we've got eleven of them here.
Yeah.
And for five years, we can make this payment. What if we, I mean, I'm a little bit confused here. What do you mean if we gotta, we can get additional? What if we just wanted to get those eleven that haven't paid off?
Yeah, we can do that. I'm saying that the, at the end of, uh, at the end of that term, with the money that we get from the state that's projected, we could still buy three additional buses.
Well, this is...
Okay.
We own them. At the end of the five years, we own the eleven buses.
Yes.
Also, the six-year...
No, there are.
Oh, so it's a five-year lease for lack of a, a, of your payment plan?
Yeah.
And then what he's saying is, the money that we get from the state on the sixth year, we can use that to purchase more buses.
And there's always the possibility that the legislature would provide additional funding, and you could get more than two hundred and thirty-eight thousand a year, right?
Yeah. And, and there's the possibility, you know, we got cut a hundred and eighty-four thousand, whatever.
Right.
Uh, if they start giving that money back, we can buy more buses as we go along.
Right, that's what I was saying, because this, you know, do you recall how much we got last year?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we got my paper.
We got two thirty-eight, is that what we're projecting?
Yeah, we got two, oh, here it is. Uh, we got two hundred and thirty-eight this year.
Three hundred and thirty-eight?
Yeah, and add a hundred and eighty-four thousand to it.
Okay, so this is really a...
Four hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Hopefully, this is like a low fee for the thing.
Yeah, hopefully. And supposedly, the people that's been around in transportation said they had done this, uh, cut the funding on buses once several years ago, and the next year, they started putting it back. Now, uh, they're not projecting that we go back up to where we were last year, but it will be a whole lot closer.
So what you're saying is, at a minimum, if you've got the two twenty-six, we could fulfill this lease, and if we got any additional funding, then at this time, we could hold that aside and maybe buy more, kind of, we wanted.
Or pay the loans on these off earlier. We could do either.
Was he... Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, I mean, looking at the numbers, it's one point four million to lease eleven buses over those five years, and purchase three in the sixth year, interest of ninety thousand and fees of thirty-three thousand. We look to see what kind of interest rate that is.
It's, it's low, it wasn't.
Yeah, it's low, they call it...
It was like less than five percent. And, you know, we talked about that too, Robbie, that we could save money, I mean, you could auction off the old buses, plus you've got eleven of those old buses out there, it's costing us a fortune to put them on the road.
Yeah.
So the money we can save at auction off the old buses and, you know, in repair costs...
I mean, what kind of mileage, and you may not know this, but we buy a new bus, how long do we get out of that bus before we start to see more than routine maintenance costs? I mean, when does, what mileage, how many years do we start to see buses that become maintenance?
Uh, I don't know, it depends on the bus, because they're, they're all different as far as that goes. And I couldn't give you an exact number, uh, but I know we have buses that are under, uh, twelve years old right now. Uh, those are money pits in, in the last few years. Uh, you know, when it happens, I, you know, I couldn't tell you.
It depends on the route they're on.
A lot of it's a route.
I mean, do we typically, though, I'm not trying to tend you down to it, but today, do we typically see four or five years of reliable service out of a bus before we start to see the cost of maintaining it exceeding what it would cost?
No, sometimes we have them come straight to us and we have problems with them from the gig guy.
Is that particular, I mean, uh, under this lease, do we have to buy a certain brand type of bus, or is Heritage, does Heritage distribute multiple lines?
No, Heritage does, just does international, which is what we've been using. Uh, from talking to other people around, uh, Bluebird and Thomas, they all have their own issues.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and it kinda goes back to, uh, even with our cars, the more new technology they put in them, the more things go bad. And that's one of the things that, that we run into, is a technology problem, being able to diagnose problems. Uh, you know, sometimes we end up changing parts or, you know, doing something that's wrong, uh, and then have to do another, you know, another repair on it, I guess, guessing wrong.
So really, I mean, what I'm looking at is a cost benefit analysis.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, that, that's what you all are alluding to, is that if we take older buses off the road, put newer buses in, in their place, it'll cost a lot less in mechanical maintenance fees. But, and it's hard for me, not, not seeing the numbers you all look at, not knowing what maintenance cost is per bus per, you know, in, in year five versus year six versus year seven, just to make a seat of the pants determination. I mean, I can see how this would seem to save us a lot of money right up front. That, that makes a lot of sense, but do we have any numbers?
No.
Have we ever looked at maintenance cost per bus in, in each of its years? Do we have that kind of data or technology?
What was the figure the State Department used? You know, it was like, was it four hundred dollars or some, some...
It was awful. It was awful, whatever they sent you guys. Four hundred dollar repair...
Average maintenance.
For a year?
For a year on a bus.
It was twelve years old.
You can't buy the mirrors or whatever.
Can't buy a tire.
No.
Well, I mean, I, my concern, I think, is the same Steve mentioned a moment ago, that we, we've always operated under the premise that we can't obligate a board beyond the year, the term that we're in, correct, Steve?
That was always the rule, but they've altered it apparently.
And in this situation, we're obligated for five years. So, again, knowing the, the whimsical nature of budgeting, what happens if next year, the, the powers that be decide that we get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bus budget? We have to take eighty thousand dollars, we're obligated to take eighty thousand dollars from somewhere else to pay this loan.
Yeah, but the good thing about that, if it does happen, if there is a good thing, if it comes out of my budget, it's ninety-five percent reimbursable. Uh, so it wouldn't be as hard a hit as, as what you would think.
That was a question I was about to, so you still get the ninety-five percent reimbursement?
Yes.
Even by, even though you're leasing?
Yes. Because it, well, that technically comes out of new bus purchases, we don't get a reimbursement for that, because the state sends us that amount of money. But, but should they, they cut us to a hundred and fifty thousand next year, and we have to make up the eighty thousand, that eighty thousand would be reimbursable for ninety-five percent.
Oh, if you had...
If we had to do that. And, and there's talk too, uh, a, a lot of people were saying, of course, you know, with the budget cuts, everybody's been talking about this, uh, the, some counties are considering buying, uh, paying for it themselves, buying it out of, uh, their, um, parts budget, which is a little bit shady, but, uh, but then it's gonna get reimbursed for the county for ninety-five percent. And I think it's a little bit shady, and I'd, I'd, I'd recommend what we do with it.
We, we all think we want it to.
Because it's all made up of ours.
Yeah. That, that's what they said.
I mean, you know, think about it.
I understand what Rowley and Steve are saying.
I do too.
But it seems to me that we have no choice. This is the only way we're gonna be able to provide buses that we need. I don't see any other way.
That, that's the thing that I see, you know, and I understand the, the money issue, but I also see that we have an obligation to get kids home. Uh, you know, had to rent buses, had to borrow buses. Uh, we've had to take runs and put them together in order to do this. Uh, so the, the quick fix, you know, to me, the logical fix, i- is let's get some new buses if we've got this available to us, so that we can, you know, if we're fortunate enough that we can get, you know, as we asked the last time, to get some more mechanics, then that's gonna help us to maintain the buses better. Uh, and about having a better staff of, of, of people to make sure that we do the PMs, to make sure that we get the work corrected, those buses should, in theory, uh, you know, hold out a whole lot longer. Uh, but as I explained the last time, uh, with three mechanics, I have one guy that pretty much does the PMs and grease jobs and finds things, and I've got two guys that's trying to keep up, but we can't. And we've got, uh, some old, old buses to begin with, so we, we just can't keep up.
How many buses do we have?
Uh, we have fifty-five that we use.
Okay, fifty-five. And how many of those fifty-five have regular runs?
Forty-nine now.
So you're forty-nine regular runs and six spares, is that what you're saying?
You know, and spares. And I've got, uh, some buses that may be a heritage, you know, to be fixed, so somebody's driving a spare. And I've got some buses that, you know, maybe we found something wrong, but it's not safe, so we won't let them drive it, but they're spare.
If everything was, if they were all operating as they should, we'd have fifty-five usable buses, forty-nine are on regular runs, six are... But you said earlier that eight are out of commission right now.
Yeah, eight are out right now.
But if we don't do this, we can buy two buses.
If we don't do this, we can buy two buses. Uh, if we don't do this, we'll have to, yeah, we'll probably end up getting, uh, something fixed so that it's safe, uh, but then we're gonna have even fewer spares next year than what we have now.
Well, I think you touched on it, Aaron, man, it's all right. Uh, when, if we do this, we need to really look and see how many ninety-passenger buses we need, 'cause I think we're putting them now places we don't think we're putting them like that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you.
And that, and they, those ninety-passengers are not paid to go on these country roads.
No. And, and that's the thing, in order to do that, uh, because of, on Route Ten especially, you know, on that side, we are so crowded that I don't have any place to put anybody else. We would have to have another route. Uh, if we have another route, let's just say it comes down Route Ten and picks up the main road, then it's gonna take kids off of four or five different buses coming down through there. Now, if we take kids off buses, we make it s- fewer people riding, then we're gonna have fewer discipline problems. Uh, it's gonna be safer. Uh, and, and plus, in this case, with the ninety-passenger bus, we seem to have nothing but mechanical problems with them. And it was explained to me that the reason is, is the motors in the back, the exhaust is not as big, they're not run far enough, long enough to burn enough stuff out of them. Uh, so ninety-passenger bus is not our best option, in my opinion.
Do you know how many ninety-passenger buses we have out there?
On the road?
Yeah, in Route Fifty-Five.
I've got, well, actually, the eighty-five or eighty-four passenger that, that I've got in this is to replace a ninety-passenger that runs the Eli area, uh, because we ended up putting a, uh, supplemental run in the evening to take care of other floods. Uh, that has allowed that, uh, to, to be a smaller one. That is also something that, for next year, I guess, when we start looking at that, will need to be, in my opinion, a, a halftime, full-time run instead of a supplemental. Uh, and, and the reason being is, with it being a supplemental run, they get paid fifteen dollars an hour, it's about a two-hour run, uh, so if I've got a sub or somebody, they, they won't run it because they don't make thirty dollars.
Let me make sure I understand it. You're, you're perfect world, who has had two drivers and a mechanic?
Were we talking perfect world?
One and a half. No, not perfect.
Because we'll jump ahead of you.
A better, a better world, we currently have, one and a half drivers and a mechanic?
One and a half drivers and a mechanic.
So two and a half positions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Cummings, do we have any place, any runs in the whole system where we could use a, a less than seventy-eight passenger bus?
Uh, we, we had some in the Harz area that was there before, uh, but the problem is, um, we're better off not to. Uh, we're better off not to, because things change and it gets crowded. Uh, and we're better off not to, because at some point, that sixty-six passenger bus wind up being a spare, and we have some of those, and we can hardly use them, because if we have to put them on another route, it, it won't work. Uh, sixty-six passenger buses, we would have to, we would have to have even more drivers in order to pull that off. Now, we've, we've got a couple places, we've got one, the, one of the buses that we rented is a fifty-four passenger special eight. Uh, currently, it's over in the Allen Creek area that runs. You know, so there are places that we could, uh, I just think in the long-term kind of stuff, it's maybe not the best thing to do. But I'll be where it's going.
Anything else, Tim? Yeah, yeah. Now, Ms. Lucas, you all have all been in this conversation, Birdy, the, the Galadies, and, and Heritage and all that, so...
We have.
And what, what are your all's thoughts or recommendations?
Well, okay, that's okay. I, looking at all of the things that have occurred with the, the buses, uh, the scrambling of trying to get all of our students home and on a safe bus, uh, just the thought of being able to replace some of those old buses with new buses is, you know, I, I think it's a, a situation that, that we need to go for, in my opinion.
Compared to, we only be able to buy two, this is...
Compared, compared, that we would only be able to find two. And you all have seen the reports, you know, there are just, our buses are, are old, such old buses, and there are just many repairs. And, like you said, one, it was okay as far as the inspector was concerned, the very next day.
Yeah, next day, tomorrow.
And, and we are, we've rented three, and we borrowed one from another county. next day.
Yeah, next day, March.
And we are, we've rented three and we borrowed one from another county. That's what we've got going on now.
And today, I had one spare. I think we had another one come back this afternoon, but today we have one spare in case something happened.
Well, now, Heritage, you're the only out there that leases a bus?
Heritage actually is not the company that leases it. They've got a company that they work with that does it. My feelings on Heritage or International buses is this, if you get Bluebirds and you get Thomases and you've got International and you have all those, you need extra parts for each one, you know, to keep on, which will cost us money. Our mechanics are used to working on International. You know, so if we go to another brand, just like whatever, it will be more difficult for them to work on it. Heritage has been, has their problems, just like everybody else, but Heritage is pretty good to help us with trying to diagnose problems and fix those things. Heritage is located across lines. Bluebird is in Pittsburgh. Thomas is in Parkersburg. So if I have a warranty issue with one of those, I would either have to take it to Pittsburgh or take it to Parkersburg where they're close.
Well, one of the kids, you do not have to get bids for this?
No, I don't have to have bids for this because it comes off, it's on the state bid, and it's their money we're spending, and we don't have to get bids for it.
Do you all have any thoughts right now, if you wanted to ask this for a while?
When do you need to know, absolutely?
Well, the sooner that, I can't give you an answer, but the sooner that we can place the order, the sooner we get the buses. Do you remember what they said the other day with their orders and then going out? They were in July, in production. If these other counties and a lot of people are talking about doing the same thing, gets ahead of us and it pushes us back. I, you know, I'm not trying to make hard set or anything, but we need buses as soon as school starts.
And the way we're looking, if I want to turn around time, is to build a bus. If we order eleven buses, they'll be delivered eleven, will we get eleven sequential buses? Or are they going to stagger those?
No, even last year when we bought them, you may get one one day and another one a couple of days later.
That's what I'm saying though, but we're going to get eleven buses in a row that they built for us, we're going to get them close in time? Or are they going to stagger them over the first semester next year?
No, they'll do them quick and we'll get them relatively around the same amount of time. The other thing that happens when we buy new buses is they come into Heritage and they may sit up there until the state inspector comes and inspects them. He has to inspect them even though they're branded as built buses before they put them on a route.
But we, assuming that we want to go this direction, we still would have to make a decision on whether we want to buy a ninety-passenger bus.
Yeah, we need to make that decision before we do anything because there's no need to buy a ninety-passenger if we want to do the other.
What are your thoughts, if you have any on that?
I think it's a no-brainer. I think we need to go with it.
I mean, having with the ninety, should we not buy a ninety-passenger bus or should we continue that way? Because where I'm understanding, if we buy a ninety, then if we don't buy a ninety, then we're going to add one employee?
We need to add another, we need to add another route, another employee.
Okay. So what's just average cost of walk per year?
New employee, I don't know what Birdy pays and all that, but it's...
That's our main force.
That much other salaries.
Perhaps there are...
Oh, very clear to me.
And the ninety-passenger is how much more than the seventy-eight?
Eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven.
Do you say it would have its advantages on other routes, on Route 10, other brands?
If we add the other route, it will take kids off of other buses, which takes care of those overcrowded buses, some of the overcrowded buses. And I like to run it down Route 10, you know, we've bounced it around over there, but I kind of like to run it down Route 10.
So would you still propose to buy eleven buses, but one of them will be, what would the other be, two eighty-fours or ten seventy-eights?
No, I'd buy another seventy-eight. So it would be ten seventy-eights.
Ten seventy-eights and one eighty-four?
And one eighty-four. Now, the eighty-four is, just so you know, the eighty-four's have a shorter wheelbase. They can go places that the ninety-passenger can't, and they essentially go to the same places as the seventy-eight bus. But with the amount of kids that we have over there, I don't think, unless you want to add another, but I don't think that's an option.
Right.
Just thought you'd try to...
It'd be an eighteen thousand dollar, I mean, I don't know, maybe it would be exactly, your lease payment would be eighteen thousand dollars, I mean, of course, vary from that little bit, but it would be less than what's the two twenty-six you're showing.
Does that affect the summer athletic, the team run, the kids, people to events?
Yeah, lots, we had two problems when it came to athletic events. You know, sometimes due to the number of people who often may not have a sub that could drive it, but even more so here recently, when we weren't able to do athletic events when they wanted to do them, it was because we didn't have the spares available. You know, so always when we have that problem, we give whatever team it is the option of going later. And when we've met with the principals and principals meetings, you know, we've always told them, you know, four fifteen, four thirty, if athletic teams want to go, we can pretty much guarantee it. But if you want to leave at two thirty or what, you know, sometime before that, our priority is to get kids home first. We'll do it when we can, but I can't guarantee that, so you need to try to schedule your stuff after that. But you know how that goes, everybody goes ahead and schedules, and we try to work it out every time the mechanic. But sometimes it just doesn't happen.
Do any of these athletic buses use the ninety-passenger size?
We may have once or twice, but we try, our ninety-passenger buses are not in very good shape, so I try not to send them out on any long trips we're going right now.
Are they older buses, the ninety-passenger buses?
Yeah, the nineties are older buses.
Would an eighty-four-passenger bus on the Route 10 run fill the need without us having to hire another driver or get another run?
No, the ninety-passenger's jam-packed right now.
But if you take the eighteen thousand that we're saving, not buy the ninety-passenger and hire a driver, we're only paying twelve thousand dollars extra.
Yeah, but there's...
In year one.
But the problem is with that, the eighteen thousand dollars that we're saving comes from our bus replacement money, so we can't spend it on anything else.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I mean, in the long run...
But in the long run, yeah.
It's only going to be from all of us, it's going to be there.
Twelve thousand in year one, and then it's another thirty thousand each of years two through five, so...
Well, the personnel, the cost is going to be the thirty thousand. I mean, I agree, you save it elsewhere.
If we need it, we need it, but just, I want to look at all the different options that we have.
If you get all these new buses, do you need another mechanic?
Yeah, because I think the big thing is, the big thing is that if we, if we don't hire another mechanic so that we can take care of what we've got, then it won't be long that we'll be in this shape again, and we want to prevent that from happening.
You're already ready for that one, Mark.
Yeah. I knew that was coming.
Would this not be something that we'd have to act on officially?
Yes. It's on the agenda with them, if everybody's comfortable with it.
Well, it's not on here as an action item. I'd like to, you know, just for clarification purposes, have Birdy here to just clarify the legality to the whole thing, that we can do it. I mean, it seems like we'd have to have something more formal to act on.
And Bird's been through this with the...
Well, I mean, is there going to be something, document, that, at least, or I don't know if that's the proper term, is that something that we're going to have to abide by or going to be presented to us?
Yes.
A copy of the lease rental agreement, something like that we can look at?
It's like we'd have to approve something officially.
Wait, wait.
Well, why don't you all gather that together, and I think the thoughts here are, we go with ten seventy-eights and one eighty-four. Am I understanding y'all correctly, is that what you plan? And go that way, then get us something, you know, whatever it is, the lease agreement or whatever, then we can act on what's to get there.
Because what I'll do is, I'll call them and tell them what our preferences on buses and they'll have to rework the numbers and get all the paperwork and something like that.
All right. May I ask, nobody has anything else on a different question? Sir, the type of fuel we use is biodegradable fuel? And I understand that we get, instead of a ninety percent reimbursement, like we get a ninety-five because we use that biodegradable fuel, is that correct?
Well, we did in the past, but that's changed now. The only alternative fuel that is, qualifies for that is propane now.
Okay.
This is just a change. So we're in a process of changing and not using a biodegradable because we feel like that that is part of the problem that we have with some of the...
That was my second question. Because that's what I've understood, that's part of what's causing some of our mechanics.
What did you say, biodegradable, what do you mean, the biodiesel?
Yeah, biodiesel, okay.
So you're all beginning to convert to just regular diesel?
Yeah, that's what we want to do. We'll call them and get some prices and make sure everything works out.
And one of the reasons we were using the other before is because we got a five percent more reimbursement.
Right. Okay. We probably wouldn't save that five percent for a liability and fuel economy.
I think so too.
Okay, good. Okay. Anything else from Mr. Cummings?
Y'all got one more?
Go ahead.
Of course, as you guys probably know, getting ready to lose a mechanic, and I know, as we've been talking about this, we have a need when we do post this extra mechanic or replacement mechanic per day, or whatever we want to call it, to try to get somebody who is, has some experience, somebody who has qualifications of some sort, ASE certifications, and because, as I mentioned earlier, working on buses is not the same now as it was in the past. We need somebody with some computer skills so that they can help to diagnose problems. But what I would like to do, with your permission, is, and to work with Ms. Lucas and Jeff and get with our lawyer and see what kinds of things that we can do to try to get a more qualified employee, how we can write a job description for that. I would like to be able to advertise in the Honeymoon and Charleston paper and maybe if there's a place in the trade magazines or whatever, to see what's out there and what we can do. Because part of the problems that we have when we lose an experienced mechanic is that we're replacing with somebody that doesn't have the training and the experience. With the amount of money that we spend on buses, the amount of money that we spend on parks and that kind of stuff, I think it would benefit us to reach out and see if we can find a qualified mechanic.
Can y'all get together on that? Just as long as it's stated in the job description, it doesn't conflict with some code.
And on their special certification program for school bus mechanics?
There is a test that they take, which is a pretty simple test, change the brakes and do this or that. The state has talked about, and they're talking with their legislature, or association's talking with the legislatures, about being able to add certifications, and as they add or obtain certifications, it will be a pay increase for that mechanic. And as they keep two of the three, or six of the seven ASE certifications or whatever, it will do this. I hope it goes that way. So I hope it goes that way so that we will have somebody that would maintain and keep their training up so that they would be qualified.
Do we send these mechanics to any school, get updated?
Every summer when we go to the conference, they have classes and training there. I had spoken to the state director and our inspector, whenever we get finished with this process of hiring and replacing, they're going to come in and help us to make sure that we organize the garage, provide our new people, especially with some additional training. Heritage will come in and do some of that stuff, but I don't really want to wait until we get the dust settles, we'll see what happens with the additional fans and try to schedule that. They have to maintain so many hours a year or something like that.
You mentioned an ASE certification, is that something that people already have?
Yeah, that, a lot of people who go through the technical skills programs have ASE.
The kids will take that tomorrow.
Okay.
At the school in Jerry's class, that will be offered tomorrow.
And they will have to wear that certification?
It's the best fit.
Yeah, okay.
Do I have anything else with Mr. Cummings? Thank you, Ron.
Thanks.
Hopefully he'll be real efficient coming next year. All right, this morning, administrative section can have a motion, please? I'm Mr. Baker, second. Second, Mr. Wilkerson. Yes, please.
Okay, item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chauffeurs for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, out-of-state travel for U of L students to Cincinnati, Ohio, June the ninth through the eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, to participate in student awards trip, transport by private coach, and the expenses are paid by participants. Item C, out-of-state travel for SESH students to Kings Island Mountain Science Day, June the eighth, transport by private coach, expenses paid by paying access letter funds. Item D, out-of-state travel for Midway students to Washington, DC, June five through seven, two thousand and fifteen, transport by private coach, expenses paid by participant. Item E, out-of-state travel for the following people, on June the eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to Chevron students to Kings Island, no funds necessary. Item F, out-of-state travel for Cheryl Lambert to San Antonio, Texas, June seventeen through twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the teaching with poverty and mind office. She is replacing another teacher that had originally been scheduled to go, paid for through Title I funds. Item G, out-of-state travel for Joanna Elkinsen to Elliott to Louisville, Kentucky, June twenty-second through twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, to accompany students to the National Skills USA Leadership Skills Conference, paid for through the CTE funds. Item H, adoption of a job description for lead school psychologist and approval to post for saying effective July the first, two thousand and fifteen. Any questions?
Okay. Y'all may recall that Mr. Lim went over that lead school psychologist, but it's the last time, so I guess we'll... Any questions or comments regarding items A through H? Okay. What I'd like to do then, if we could, we already, we have a motion and a second, and have comments for items A through H, I'd like to call for a question on those items right there, and we should do item I separately. So is all in favor of items A through H as presented, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Then let's go to item I.
Mr. Priestley?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we order Mr. Jeffrey Midkiff as superintendent of schools for a period of three years, at a salary of one oh seven five.
Mr. Curry's made a motion that we hired Jeff Midkiff as superintendent of schools for three years, commenced July the first, two thousand and fifteen, an annual salary of one oh seven five. Will I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilkinson seconds that motion. Okay, any comments or concern, or not concern, but any, any further discussion on the motion? Is that an all yes vote?
Yes, yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Midkiff. Now the concern.
I tried to voice it. I tried to voice it.
You made that one step ahead. Thank you for that. Jeff, congratulations and good luck. And I'm sure we're all behind you and will do all we can for this issue.
Well, thank you, and I really appreciate having the opportunity, excited about the opportunity to serve in the capacity superintendent, superintendent and lead this county over the next three years. And I feel like, you know, it's going to be a great relationship that we want to have together as we move forward and work on some things that we know needs to be worked on, and one of which is focusing on achievement. We want to make sure that that stays forefront of what we do. So thank you again, I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, that's what we're all about, chief. As I've said before, Ms. Luke has decided to retire and leave us, and we certainly appreciate the time that she's put in here as superintendent, going back when she and I were at Eatonville many, many years ago. I were at Aitkenfield many, many years ago. But Chris, we sure appreciate all you've done and, you know, if you want to go and put your feet on the boards where you're going to do it, whatever, we wish you best of luck. Okay, let's go to the findings section, please. Have a motion. Here, I'll make some motions. Have a second?
Say.
Second by Rowdy. Thank you, each other. Just a lot of players. Like a bird. Okay, Mr. McKit, you're still filling in for Birdie.
All right, item A, scheduled invoices totaling one hundred and fifty one thousand eighty four dollars forty two cents, see attachment. Item B, it's approval of USI insurance services as agent of record for workers' compensation for the two thousand fifteen sixteen fiscal year, effective July first, two thousand fifteen. Item C is the approval of a plan of improvement of instructional programs or step seven for the two thousand fifteen sixteen fiscal year, see attachment. And item D is budget transfers totaling six thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars and seventy cents, see attachment. Any in all questions to Mrs. Gannon?
I don't know if we're going to get to fill that full week. Brenda may fall on you, I don't know.
Hey, Birdie, a good doctor today, that's why she's on here, it's like that's why she left here.
Okay. Okay. I wonder if Chris was going to say something, she's going to take it out on us. Okay, is that an all yes on the findings items?
Yes.
All right, all yes on the motions. Okay, let's go to personnel, please, have a motion. Mr. Curry made the motion, will you go second to that?
Section A is for the transfer of professional personnel. You can see that's for next year, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, separate year. Section B is the transfer of professional personnel pending the issuance of a first class permit. That's also effective for next year. Section C is the transfer of service personnel, effective for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. Section D, employment of extracurricular personnel. And the first one is for this summer and then second, the second and third is for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Retirement and or resignation, you can see the effective date, that's resignation. The change of the retirement date for Lincoln County High School CDE teacher Terry Spadnawal from June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, to May fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. And then to abolish the following extracurricular postings at Hamilton, K.A. and re-post. Abolish the following summer service postings for the ESY and re-post. Remember when kids dropped those last week, due to the time they collect on the posting. And that will be, those will be repassed.
Any questions? Okay, is there a call for questioning on personnel items, an all yes?
Yes.
Okay, comments, concerns? Mrs. Lucas, will you? Okay, anybody?
I just have one thing. I noticed, I picked you, Senator Chris, said they was going to start on a wall and staff staff school, what's that?
They talked with Dana and for some reason they wanted to do it after the students were gone.
Well, did they give him any clue what you're going to try to do?
No.
That's what I.
I thought maybe they were going to blast it off, that's why they didn't. The kids, didn't want the kids there because they deal with the kids there.
And the students aren't really using that, so I don't understand why they have to like.
That was their, that was their comment to him. He told me that just today.
Oh, you mean they suggested to Mr. Snyder?
The contractor wanted to come in when the students were gone.
At times, they were the ones who suggested.
Yes, yes.
Are you ever going to blast?
That's what I mean, they're going to blast. I don't know what they're going to do, but yes.
Can we find out what they're proposing to do before they start on it because the way the project initially turned out was not acceptable and we may need to keep, someone from the county may need to keep a very close eye on the reported repair.
Personally, I'll see if I can fix it.
That's why I want to know what they're proposing to do.
Those are the down layers, it's all overdue.
Yeah.
But I'll see if we can get something from them.
Okay, is there anything else, Brad? Is that, anybody have anything else?
Well, one in your comments today, I was looking, our crew is going to fix the repair or patch the fan practice field.
They have had two guys over there today and I think last, last week, two?
Last week.
One, one day over there last week. We had two people because the volunteers aren't coming for us.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
You know, we don't have any yet.
I have no comment on that. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn to June the second. Just a reminder that we're going to start at five o'clock. At six, we're going to have the achievement awards.
Well, I didn't know the group, I was just, wanted to say.
Okay, but just a reminder that we're going to start at five. We're going to, we'll meet from five until six and if we don't finish, we'll do the awards, then we'll come back and resume the meeting.
But before we dismiss?
Yes, I'm going to.
Okay, sorry. I was afraid she was going to blast it.
Go ahead, the four's yours.
Okay, I just wanted to say how appreciative I have been to, I'm not going to get emotional, to all of you all and what a, a special honor it has been for me to have been superintendent of Lincoln County. You know, this is my home and I have a vested interest and well, you know, for many, many years, I have two grandchildren in this system and it has been a pleasure with everything that we've gone through and we've gone through some situations. But I am so pleased that I'll be able to, you know, do something wonderful hopefully with my life after, after this experience, whether it's another job or whether it is political, you know, remains to be said. But it has been, it has been a pleasure working with you all. And I know that Mr. McKit will do a wonderful job. I've tried to groom him the best I can, you know. It's, yeah, you have to look at what I had to work with, but I think I've, I think I've faced strides, but, you know, it's just, and it's been such a pleasure with Mr. O'Donnell here.
Thank you very much.
Working with you and.
Likewise.
You know, you've been very kind to the board, to me, and I so appreciate that.
That, that won't change.
And just the people in general, you know, throughout this county. Seen lots of people, new faces and old faces. And that I've worked with, but, you know, it is, it has truly, truly been an honor to be here and, you know, I'll do things myself. And, and this has been a good thing and hopefully I'll do, I guess, something wonderful after this, who knows? But, you know, I'll be around, going to volunteer in the school, so, so I'll tell my grandchildren. So anyway.
Thank you, Ron. Two of our bus drivers.
I'll say something to the driver, right?
But anyway, thank you all. Thank you all.
Can I say something? For somebody who has suffered through twelve years of the state takeover prior to Mrs. Lucas coming, she has been a blessing and she's done a wonderful job and all I can say is you've come a long way, baby.
Thank you, thank you.
So maybe you're not putting your feet up on the board, Jeff.
I'm probably not.
All right. All right, everybody, so we will resume June the second, five o'clock over at the high school. Have a motion placed to adjourn.
I move.
I'll make a motion, second, Mr. Wilkinson, all yes?
Yes.
Yes.